All right, we're recording.
You're live?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I want to call the order of the Bath Planning Commission meeting of September the 26th, and it's six o'clock. Can I get any approval for the agenda?
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a consensus vote? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Any conflict of interest?
Sorry, who made that motion? Who seconded it?
I did.
He seconded it?
Ray Cocke.
Ray Cocke said. Thank you.
Is this just a missed, huh? This is what I printed off. That's what I just picked up from my pack.
Oh, these are the minutes from last meeting. Thank you.
Any public comments? If you're just an observer, well, thank you for coming.
It's a groupie.
The minutes of the September 12th meeting, gentlemen. Any additions, corrections?
I've got several comments, more on formatting than anything else, and we had a new person doing her minutes. One of them, I've brought up before, and it's because the person who was new, is that motions should be moved to do something, and that comes up several places in the minutes.
So instead of saying, I'd like to make a motion, say...
You can say you can make a motion, but in the minute, George moved, and sometimes it's in his George motions.
Yeah.
Well, it should be moved.
Okay.
And it should always have been passed then. Couple times I think it was in moves, it should be.
Yeah, first person made the motion, a second person.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, 10A. No, 9A.
9A.
New business. A is comments on the October 10th Planning Commission meeting. There were comments, because first, well, I guess you're not going to be here. I think I put something in to say what those comments were.
Yeah, okay.
Then under the motion to move John Wright. I don't think I made that motion. I think that was Ryan, wasn't it?
I believe it was Ryan.
I think it was Ryan.
Ryan made the one for the vice chair. I don't think he made.
I probably made it.
You made the one for the chair.
I have notes on it. If I have.
I just didn't really remember tonight.
I think it was Ray Severy next to it. Was it you, George?
Possibly.
Might have been.
Okay.
I'd have to look at my notes. I didn't bring any notes last week. Did I?
I'll look back at my notes. I usually write it down, so.
Doesn't matter, I'll take credit for it, but I don't think I did it. I don't think it's a game changer.
Grammar's spelled wrong too, Miles.
Where's that?
Uh, new business. Oh, your Crainer. Oh!
The new Kramer. Kramer's gone.
That was, yeah, that was throwing us off though, too.
Yeah.
Because you guys' last name are former.
Kramer and Crainer.
Yeah, here and Crainer.
I moved to change your last name to Kramer.
Mmm. It's been there all my life.
Private callers. Okay. Let me see, 12. Yep, 12, a report from Ryan. I just think we need more.
More detail.
Detail in there. The person was appointed chairman. Was that chairman of a committee? I mean, the board doesn't have chair people.
I don't know what that one is. I'm going to pull up a question mark next to it.
Yeah, all those are kind of like.
More detail.
Yeah. And like the, receive the ARP proposals. ARP, eh? From whom? It could have been from the county, it could have been.
It was from all the various departments.
Right, yeah, from county departments, yep.
Yeah.
Okay. That's me to get.
Okay. We'll go back and review those two areas. We'll add more detail.
So you want to bring these back, then? It's the pleasure of the commissioners.
Can we make a motion to approve?
We approve them as amended.
Do you want to approve them as amended?
Yeah. I'd say as noted.
Okay.
As noted. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, George Baker.
Second.
Aye.
Yeah, those, can I get a consensus vote? Thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, no, I got it over here. Sorry, George. Introduction.
Can we, I, communications.
You want to do communications and put it after that? I'm sorry, I put it before.
Oh, I'm sorry, John, no.
No, go ahead. Communications, I don't have any problem.
I'm sorry. And I was the one that asked. Yeah, just real quick, I didn't want to forget. We did get a communication from Williams Works, just so everybody is on the same page. Those are the consultants helping us with our non-morals plan. So they would like to plan for a non-morals visioning session workshop on Wednesday, October 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00. That will be taking place in this room. I will send out more information about that. I just found out a couple hours ago. I wanted to give you guys a heads up as soon as I know. I'll send an invite to everyone, so you can get on your calendars. I'll work with Karen Taylor to see if I can get some snacks and some, you know, pop or whatever, just so.
October 25th?
25th, yep, that's a Wednesday.
A Wednesday, yeah. Okay, starts at 5:00?
5:00 to 7:00, and it doesn't run consistently. People can come and go, you're here for 15 minutes, you know, that's fine. Okay, sorry, John.
No, no, my mistake. Is that anything else, Miles?
That's it. Thank you.
Did you want to talk about that meeting that's on Thursday now, or later on? The one on the same job?
Thursday, yeah, yeah, that's a good point. I was going to talk about that in a report from Karen, but now it'll be more appropriate, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Clean County Catalyst has a new CEO. His name is Tim Fair. Clean County Catalyst is economic development organization in our county that just kind of helps facilitate some of these larger projects and helps enter government relations between townships, counties, state, health department, whatever's required for the project. He's trying to get that organization rolling again. In an effort to do so, he is holding an annual dinner, and it's going to be this Thursday. It's going to start at 6:30, I believe, and it's at, John, what was the name of that location we talked about?
It's the fertilizer people, shoot.
Let me look on my calendar. We just saw.
Up there on 21.
On 21, yeah, about two miles west of town. I can see Agroco or.
Ag, ag.
Agro.
Agro Liquid.
Yes, thank you.
Agro Liquid. So I can send, I can send the flyer out to everyone, but Planning Commission members are invited. If any of you guys are free and would like to attend, we're paying members of that organization, so it's free to us. I'll be going to show support for the organization. So if you're free this Thursday, you want some free dinner, let me know. I'll send you a flyer.
What's the menu?
I have no idea, but it's 6:00 to 7:30, and I would need to know in the next, like, 12 hours if you're going to go or not. So let me know by noon tomorrow.
I can vouch for it. It's an excellent place, Ray. They have their own in-house kitchen.
It's wonderful.
It's a really nice establishment. Food has always been excellent. Lovely people that own it. Their manufacturing facility is actually in Alamo.
That's Constance's birthday. I don't think she'd probably.
Probably would.
Want me to go.
Yeah, if anybody wants to go.
Taking a nerve to the dinner won't get you out of.
Well, there you get a free dinner you can have.
Take her out for dinner.
Yeah. Is that old, Miles, anything else?
That's all I got. Thank you so much.
Okay. Will you get the new intern to introduce himself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Hi, everyone. My name's Kate Peck. I am in my fourth year at Michigan State University. I'm an urban and regional planning student. Going to be graduating this semester. I'm on track two. And I am a new planning intern, obviously, for Bath Township.
And you're seeking grad school?
I am seeking grad school. I'm going to be going into my masters this coming year in the accelerated masters program. So that will be, that's what I have in the near horizon. It was nice to meet everyone.
Thank you.
You too, Kate.
Glad to hear you're going to masters, otherwise you'd be here for three months.
Yeah, that's right. Critical piece of information right there.
Yeah, yeah. Could you tell us a little bit about your background? Where you lived, urban or rural?
Yeah, so I grew up in southeast Michigan. I lived in Novi. I went to school in Canton, Canton High School. Last, this last summer, I interned for Oakland County for the road commission there. So I was a GIS intern. As well as that, I, I've been doing some research in relation to urban planning, case study of a place in California for both, for mixed-use developments. Yeah, it's kind of some of the stuff I've done before this in relation to planning.
Oh, great, good.
And we're happy that he knows GIS. Our other intern, you guys met at the last meeting, Lexi, she's not skilled in GIS, hasn't really touched it at all. So Lexi will be helping more on the policy side of things, and Kate will be helping me more on the land use and GIS side of things.
Great. Sounds like a good combination.
We're hoping to have them, and we're excited that they're on our team.
Okay, gentlemen, we have old business, and I see no public for the public hearings, which concerns me. Can we?
The public is here.
Well, the one public, yes, that's true, but she's decided, her decline to comment so far.
So far.
Can we just do these handshishly? Do we have to open the meeting, close the meeting?
We have to open the public hearing?
Yeah, we just have to open the public hearing.
You can roll through all three with the public hearing.
With one opening.
And we'll close it on the third.
Right, correct, yes, I know. I wonder if anybody would object to that program or policy. Okay, thank you, guys. We don't normally have three at once. This is unusual.
It is unusual.
So I'm going to open the public meeting, hearing, for three ordinances. The health and wellness ordinance, the sidewalk ordinance, and the private drives ordinance. So seeing, would you like to comment about any of these ordinances? Order! I'm going to, I've never had this happen before.
You have a couple people having public hearings.
We've got time to discuss them.
So I guess we'll close the public hearing.
No, don't do that.
No?
Leave it open.
You want to leave it open?
You can leave it open while commissioners and staff discuss various.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
The public comes in, they can join in.
Okay, we can do that. Yeah, I don't, I don't care how we do it. As long as everybody is agreeable to doing it that way, that's fine.
I think leaving it open would show that you made the effort in case.
Well, okay, all right, let's leave it open. That's all. All right.
Can we discuss this one at a time, though?
Yeah, so let's talk about the health and wellness ordinance.
You want me to do an intro?
Would you give an end or not to it, Miles, please?
Yes.
Basically, this is a rewrite of an old ordinance that was created a long, long time ago, and the legal department did this whole thing at the request of the clerk.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
When I started going over these, Miles, I noticed that everything was struck through. Is that the old ordinance that you've stricken?
That is the old ordinance, so.
But I mean, I had to go a heck of a long ways to find one that wasn't stricken.
Yeah, so just to give us a background, I guess, on how we got here. So we were doing an enforcement action on a massage studio that located in downtown Four Corners, I guess more accurately, called Bath, in the Kessler Building. It's a new business. They just had some licensing stuff they had to clean up with our building department. They complied and did do so. So we appreciate anyone that's willing to do business in our township. But that aside, it kind of got massage venues on our radar, and it was our assessor that mentioned there was an ordinance that covered these. When we looked into if it was on our immunity code, we didn't see it on there. But if anybody's ever worked with Beth Baki, they would know that her mind is like a steel trap, and she'll remember anything from like 25 years ago. So she remembered that there was an ordinance somewhere in the basement, and she went down there and found it. It never got codified, I'm not sure why, but it had a signature from Kathy McQueen, and we looked in the minutes. It was approved by the board in the early 2000s. So not sure what happened there, but Brenda, because of some of the, Brenda Chandler, who's our current clerk, read some of the language, was concerned about the wording of some of the language, brought it to my attention, and I worked with Karen to bring it to legal to see what they thought about the ordinance itself. Their advice was to strike the chapter, and because many of the, it became apparent when we were reading the ordinance that it was pretty lengthy in nature for one land use to have 20 pages covering it. So it became apparent that it was targeting a particular business that was of concern at the township at the time, which whenever you're writing land use policy or any kind of zoning policy, you want it, you want it to apply to the township as a whole, not be directed towards any one development. And then if something is criminally legal, you don't, it's not the place for regulatory or zoning policy to cover criminal law. So the legal counsel said, you know, if these explicit adult uses are illegal, then it shouldn't be Kevin Douglas, the ordinance compliance officer enforcing, it should be the police, like criminally charging individuals.
Right.
So their recommendation was to strike this ordinance and then replace it with some updated land use categories, and then define some of those categories. So we struck out all the massage language. We updated some of the land use categories and to outpatient health services establishments, health and wellness centers. We also talked about barber and hair salons, because sometimes those are thrown in the category of health and wellness centers. So we tried to put some more modern labels on these land uses that we're seeing in shopping centers and tried to identify them as what they call themselves now in 2023. And then we tried to define some of those land uses in the definition section as well, like office, because obviously we had a conversation recently about what an office was, if any of the Planning Commission members were here when we were talking about office space there on Chandler outside of Hakalo. So, and those all working with legal to produce this language. And honestly, out of the three ordinances we got going right now, this is probably the easiest slam dunk of the three, because it was just clear that we could get rid of most of this and just redefine a couple of things and put the township in a far less liable state. We felt like this was a big liability, having this on the books. And we felt like it was unenforceable. We felt like if we ever did do an enforcement action and tried to use this ordinance, we wouldn't hold up in court.
Thanks, Miles.
That's that one.
Anybody got any questions, any comments?
Under K, L, and M, you start abroad, labor unions, membership, retail establishments, but would it be better to say this is not inclusive of everything? There could be something we're missing in that grouping?
Which one?
Well, the L and M in particular.
The page I'm on right now? 4. K, L, and M?
Scroll down.
No, scroll down. It's under the appendix A zoning.
Okay. The new K, the new L, and the new M? Yep.
Yeah. At the last meeting, we were talking about trying to make sure that we didn't say, these are the only things you can do. That list is all inclusive of what will allow to happen.
Yep, but then we also have above office service establishments, and you can reference this section to get more detail on what those are. So those are, those are kind of a specialized office use, and obviously that black text is the language that was there prior. But then we have a general office use.
Okay.
I have a question. Go ahead, Ray. Appendix A zoning, under definitions, there's, at the very first paragraph, health and wellness center means blah, 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 blah. And then at the end, it says massage, and then in parentheses, it says reference 15.24. But this doesn't go down that far to reference that, so I don't know what that is.
Yeah, it's not included here because we didn't change anything from it. But again, we're not seeking any action on this tonight, so.
Oh, okay.
I can go back, and I'll make a note to review that, to make sure we're referencing the correct section, and then also check it out yourselves, and please let us know. But I'll look at that. That's a good point, because whenever we have a reference, we should have included it here, so you know what we're referencing.
I just wanted to see what it said.
It's a good point.
In that point, in that context.
And like I said, even with that office reference, too, that Mr. Crainer brought up just now, we'll check into that one as well, and make sure we are referencing the right section, make sure we're talking about the right things. And if you see that you think there needs to be more examples of office uses there, just let us know.
No, no, I'm not saying more examples of, but.
Miles?
Yes.
I'm confused by that second definition.
Okay.
Will you tell me what that means?
Office establishments.
Office service establishments.
Before services on the premises, those including, but not.
That are happening in fields?
Yeah.
What work is happening in fields?
Well, there's a lot. You could have a constructive.
In fields, we meant like, like different sectors, different job sectors.
Okay. I definitely read that as on the premises in fields. Maybe there's a different word.
We could, yeah.
You just got stuck in traffic.
Different career, different career sectors.
That's what it said.
Underneath this is. I can see that.
Yeah.
Here, Ryan, you need this more than I do. I'm really confused.
Maybe like career sectors?
Or even sectors.
Yeah, sectors, I think, is a good, is a good word. You have to read it with the right emphasis in the right place, otherwise it could mean either.
Ryan sees corn when he thinks fields.
I'm from northern Michigan.
We always strive for clarity, so if you're confused, obviously that means other people are going to be confused.
Right.
It's a good call.
That's true.
Any other comments?
Looks good. Do you want to move to the next one? Sidewalk?
Well, some people are still looking. Let's give them time to think.
Sure, oh, no, no problem.
I mean, we're not on a close timeframe here, so.
And again, we feel like if there is any illicit activity going on, you know, please call the police.
Looks good.
Everybody had time to look it all over?
Yeah.
Let's move on. Let's move on to the sidewalk ordinance. Riles, you want to introduce the sidewalk ordinance, please?
Yeah, so this is one that everyone, of course, has seen a couple of times now, and I do apologize that we've been bringing it to you so much, but, you know, obviously it's just an effort to be transparent. We wanted to get this rolling quickly with you guys, and maybe brought it a little too soon, a little too rough. We wanted you to see it through the iterations as being built out. The board of trustees had directed us to, you know, review and implement changes to sidewalk ordinance as needed. Kind of just a high-level plan of action here is to create a sidewalk ordinance, use some dollars that are available to repair said sidewalks in the spring, and then do a public ad campaign, letting people know that the sidewalk ordinance will now be strictly enforced, and the ordinance should be new and able to be enforced. One caveat in that timeline, too, is it's been identified that we need to have a discussion about maintaining the sidewalks through the winter, so that's later on the agenda today. And I would assume we continue to have those discussions prior to the implementation of this ordinance. So that's kind of what we're doing here. In terms of where the ordinance itself is at, we made several of the revisions that were identified at the last meeting, and we have continued to work with the township engineer to clean up the construction standards, so those are a little bit in a more refined state now. And they, in their refined state, they've been sent to Prime and New Hall for a review, and we are awaiting their review. So in that section, just know that the jury's still out, I guess, on what the final take will be there.
Any questions? There's a couple of people here that probably don't know the history of why this got kicked to us. Several years ago, there was a movement to get some safe routes to school funding by several groups in the community, and we've discovered that the sidewalk ordinance was A, outdated, and B, wasn't being enforced. And since we're going to put in all new sidewalks and some additional sidewalks, we want to make sure that they're properly maintained, so that they're usable by the people in the sidewalk district.
Yeah, and to John's point there, it's important to know, and I guess mainly for any public that watches this video, and then our new Planning Commission members, that that grant was funded to the tune of just below $500,000 for the safe routes to school. And there's also been talks, I believe trustee Fionn's bliss would know better than me, but I think at the board level, to use even DDA money that's left over before the DDA was liquidated to, I don't know if that's the right word, but.
Yeah, it's probably not the best.
Yeah. But before the DDA was no longer in existence, to use the funds that remain there, that can only be spent within the DDA area on some of the sidewalks, since that is the area in the township where the sidewalks are in the greatest disrepair.
And that's like $170,000 right now?
Yeah, in that fund. Now, most of the safe routes to school, coincidentally, is also taking place within that, you know, quote unquote downtown area, just because it's proximity to the schools and dense populations of youth. So we feel like things are coming together nicely in terms of us reviewing this ordinance, in terms of that build-out happening next year, and it's the right time to have the conversation, I think.
Yep, I think so, too.
There was a question I had on page four.
Yep.
Top of the page, subsection D. The township shall perform ordinary maintenance on pathways.
Yep.
Except when maintenance is the result of negligence. Who's going to pay then?
Whoever, I would say objectively whoever caused the negligence, so like, let's say it was Comcast, and let's say we had, there are two things. One, you'll notice that the word pathways is used here. Now, this isn't a pathway ordinance. I don't know if you were here when we had this conversation last, but we would like to keep this ordinance very sidewalk-centric. We feel if we're going to develop a pathways ordinance, that needs to be a chapter after this ordinance. But we did just want to mention that, that we have our bases covered for when Comcast are, because we do have a couple quote unquote pathways in the township, mostly along Saginaw. And if somebody were us to damage them, we wanted the tools in our toolbox to be able to send them a notice. But that would be my interpretation, whoever was the cause of the negligence.
To piggyback off of that, can we define that a little bit better then, in that section?
Yeah, we could. We could say, you know. Yeah, we could put a second sentence that says the party that was, the root cause of the negligence is the one on the, you know, however we want to word it, on the hook for those repairs.
The other comment that I had is on page six, top of the page, it's the section 58A. It says sidewalks shall be constructed of concrete.[1748.82] But some people have pavers in sidewalks because it's an aesthetic, uh, to do it that way versus having concrete. This is, there is no exception. It shall be concrete to have a sidewalk.
That, that was our intention. Uh, we're open to feedback on that, if there, that was our intention.
We spoke about that a little bit, about.
But I don't think public sidewalks should be paving stone or concrete blocks. That's, if they want to do that at private property, fine. This is in the public right of way. I think it should be concrete.
Okay.
All uniform.
All uniform, yeah.
I was thinking of the retail folks.
But those aren't sidewalks. If they're not the right way, they're not.
They, they could be in some, I've been in communities where there were pavers for sidewalk.
We could, just to meet, just to meet halfway here, would you want us to maybe say, well, sometimes a sidewalk, we, we, and you know, we did talk about this. I was gonna say, suggest maybe we put shall be made of concrete within the public right of way. The only problem with that is sometimes sidewalks aren't built in the public right of way. Sometimes we need an easement, like we are doing right now.
Right.
We could build a caveat in there, um, to say something like, if the pedestrian network is a part of the mass, uh, master site plan for development within the planning commission's authority to have discretion, they shall review at the time of a site plan review.
Yeah, you could do that.
That's a good one, yeah.
Just so like, if something does come up on the inner, inner site, you know, of a large complex, you guys have some flexibility.
Yeah, that they wanna come and say, you know, can we get a, get a, uh, deviation on this or something, you know?
Right.
Cause they're, they're still be responsible for that.
Oh, yeah, that just gives you, uh, on the interior site, if maybe they wanna have like a chipped pathway or something between two buildings instead of like a, uh, concrete sidewalk, they would have that flexibility if this body deems it's appropriate.
I think that's a good gate in the fence.
Yeah, it gives, I, I like putting tools in you guys' toolbox, cause the, the developer, well, yeah, Brian's laughing. The developer though, you know, they come in with these interesting site plans, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna, uh, stifle innovation.
No, that's very correct.
Go ahead.
Page six, letter E.
Okay.
Did you mean to, to repeat yourself in that one? Also, sidewalks constructed, repaired, or rebuilt shall be constructed, repaired, or rebuilt according to the following specifications?
Probably not. I should probably word it a little bit cleaner.
Okay.
So thank you for that. It's the type of feedback we are looking for. And that's in black text, so that might, you know, that's not us, you know, but yeah, we need to clean that up, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I didn't notice it.
And that's, you know, many eyes, right?
Yep, that's right. Anything else, gentlemen?
I have a question.
Go ahead, George.
Um, on page two, fifty-eight. We see, it says ten feet on the pathway there. Is there, was that, my question is just, was that something that was legal thing, or is it just?
That, that's standard for pathways is ten feet. That's like M dot, uh, best practice.
Yeah.
The ten feet, also, if you get federal money, the federal government requires ten feet.
Yep.
Yep.
Or if you get M dot money.
Well, everybody too probably.
Just real quick, Miles, you probably already answered this, and I apologize if you already did. The sidewalk under definitions, did you touch on that yet?
Yeah, we, uh, yeah, we took out pathways. There, there was a circularness between the definition of sidewalk and pathways, and we tried to correct that.
Okay, okay.
So I, I hope that's been corrected.
Yeah, cause it just said sidewalk maintenance improved with concrete and designed for pedestrian travel.
Yeah. Pretty basic definition by that is what a sidewalk is, yeah.
That's all I got.
Anything else, gentlemen?
I got a few.
What?
Okay. Fifty-eight thirty-seven, what is that? I gotta find it.
What page are you on, Ray?
Uh, I gotta find it. It's fifty, section fifty-eight thirty-seven, it's on page, what?
Fifty-eight thirty-seven.
Fifty-eight thirty-seven, that should be on page eight?
It's on six.
No, no, it's not eight.
Sidewalk construction standards. Page six.
Oh, yeah. It's a, just a minor thing, I think, uh, let's see, on B.
Okay.
We need to change that. We need to put an or in there somewhere. It says, uh, permits shall be obtained from the county road commission or mission department of transportation.
Okay.
We need the or in there, cause we took out the rest of that sentence.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Good call there.
Yep. Um, on E. Okay. E, six. B, here we go.
What page?
Oh, this would be page seven.
Okay.
Six B, construction joints. That's kind of confusing where it's worded. I think the intent is, first of all, joints may be formed with a grooving tool for width of one eighth to one fourth, and it's at the width, okay? Then using a divider strip, I don't know what that's for. Using a, using divider strips, three and a half inches in thickness.
Well, we're definitely in the weeds for me, um, but I can add, I'll put a question mark next to it, uh, ask, cause right now this is out for engineering review.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll ask them to review that part.
Are you, are you asking what, what a divider strip is, Ray?
I'm wondering if it's, it, cause when they usually hand tools, and you got a, a tool that's probably made this with, is three and a half inches in thickness, maybe width.
No, that's, a divi- uh, uh.
That's the thickness of the divider strip.
The divider strip is made out of a, uh, like a fabric?
Yeah. Okay, that, that would be, yeah, I agree. That would be though for the expansion joints. Contraction joints, which are every five feet.
Right, but they, the, the, the dividers are only done like every, three pads or so.
I agree. So I don't know if it, knows it really fits in this contraction, con- contraction joint thing. The other thing in there is that, uh, or by cutting after floating to a depth of not one, I think I put, I like that. It should, it should be saw cutting.
Or by saw cutting.
But once it's after floating, I think it gives some people the impression that can be done as soon as they, as soon as they float it off. Well, it can't be. It's gotta be, it's gotta be cured for day first.
It's gotta be done after it sets.
It's gotta cure for day or something like that, not, not a week, but a day.
So how would you, just cause I'm, you know, we're on my end now, how would you, how do you want that working?
I would say saw cut within, you know, twenty-four, twenty-four hours after placement or something like that.
So or by saw cutting twenty-four hours after placement?
Yeah.
Or after cured?
I don't think I'd say twenty-four hours.
Could be initial cure, that, you don't, that may doesn't have to be twenty-four hours, but.
Totally depends on.
It's gotta be cured enough so they can walk on it.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put another underline next to this. I'm gonna be review.
I'd just say saw cutting.
Yeah.
So I'll put saw cutting in there for them to review.
Yeah. Cause saw cutting, my way of thinking, especially on the roads to school, stuff like that, saw cutting is the way to go. Because if you put in the grooves they're talking about, kids now have roller blades, they have, need motorized scooters.
Trip.
And, uh, but it's a thump, 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 thump to go down the side. If you saw cut it, they don't know it's there.
Yeah.
They drive right over it.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, cause we just, uh, they poured the patio out here behind the township and they saw cut it, and yeah, it's super even.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think saw cutting is the way to go.
Do you ever ride a skateboard?
Have I ever ridden a skateboard?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. It's not going over those ones, it's nothing.
All those bumps?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
I was thinking more, more, I was thinking more riding a bicycle, not that much that either part of it.
To those who are training.
In my riding bicycle, I prefer the saw cuts for the, anyway. Um, okay.
Okay.
Thirty-eight A A.
Non-motorized?
Uh, yeah, non-motorized, that would be on page eight-eight. Non-motorized trail construction. The only, the question I had on that, do we want to put in an allowance for crushed limestone trails? They aren't all gonna be paved.
I, I have something to say about that. I've done more than a little bit of research on this, um, and in fact, I've talked with Ben, uh, quite a bit about it, and Karen. Um, not, not necessarily crushed limestone, because as, as the township has found, crushed limestone chocks terribly. And, um.
And dissolves.
Recycled asphalt does not. And there's, uh, and it's, um, limestone, crushed limestone is not for use within three hundred feet of any, any natural water source.
That wouldn't work too well.
So you don't wanna put it, you know, close to the lake or anything like that, but crushed lime, crushed asphalt can be used for that, and it's safe. Um, and it's permeable. That's why I think, uh, and Miles, this is the reason I'm saying this, is because.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that should be put in there because, uh, crushed asphalt can also be compacted to be ADA compliant as well.
Which one was it? Was it B, Ray? Sorry, I'm looking.
Uh, it's, uh, fifty-eight thirty-eight A.
What sentence, where, where are you saying limestone?
We are, it's not there.
Oh, that'd be just prohibited.
You want it there?
Well, no, from what Ray said, we probably shouldn't put limestone, he's saying put a crushed asphalt.
Okay.
You can get crushed asphalt for thirty dollars a ton, you know?
Yeah.
A hot mixture of asphalt, so you just want the option to have.
Manic compact.
Something, so, so you don't have to pave it.
Okay, option for crushed asphalt added.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, you definitely wanna take out limestone. Limestone dissolves.
Well, limestone's not in here.
That's why, I, that's why I thought you were saying, I'm looking for limestone.
I was looking for it, and I couldn't find it.
Expensive. Are we prohibiting them?
All I'm seeing is twenty-two A.
Yeah.
Well, that's gravel.
Yeah, that's road gravel.
That's road gravel, possibly.
Paragraph above that though, talk about asphalt.
You may wanna mention that to Miles. Miles?
Yeah.
George just brought up that, are we prohibiting the use of concrete on non-motorized pathways?
No.
Oh, crushed concrete? Are you changing that?
Or concrete.
Okay.
Or concrete.
Crushed concrete is almost an aggregate, so yeah, you wouldn't, that would be totally different. That'd be like crushed asphalt.
Yeah. A good point though, yeah, they could be concrete.
Even though it's expensive, we, are we prohibiting them from using?
No, well, we've got, we've already got concrete ones on Saginaw Highway.
Okay.
Correct.
So, yeah, we probably should put that in here.
Okay, so concrete, what about, so this is non-motor, just cause we're on the topic now, this is non-motorized, uh, trail construction, so.
Right.
Well, you probably wouldn't put it out there.
Yeah, but what about like even wood chips?
Well, technically, this belongs in the non-motorized trail category.
If we, if we created a pathway ordinance, it's likely that we would move this section out of here and move it into that section.
Right, we talked about that before.
We wanted to lightly touch it in this, so, just so we got something on the books.
Well, that makes sense.
But, so we're thinking types of concrete as well as?
Wood chips.
Wood chips.
Other, other recycled aggregate, I guess.
Yeah.
Recycled aggregate, that's a good word.
That'd be a good, yeah, way of phrase.
Yeah.
Cause then you could say asphalt.
That covers everything just about.
Say, you know.
Right.
There's now, in fact, as long as Miles is still writing, I just, just last night watched a, I watch weird things, but they have a product now that you can spray on the recycled aggregate that has been compacted on trails, and you should go over and spray it, and it's almost, it almost makes it adhere a little tighter together so that it doesn't blow away and doesn't get ruts and stuff like that, but it's still permeable. It's kinda interesting. I think it's some kind of polymer is what I think it is, but.
Could be. Got too deep into YouTube.
That might have been where it was. I, I just said, what did she do on cheese?
Oh, that's interesting. There's a lot of cool products out there these days.
Yeah.
Um, there are, just a numbering thing, which you probably would have caught.
Okay.
Is on, uh, fifty-eight thirty-nine, we've numbered now.
Okay.
Should be thirty-eight. I wonder, was, was thirty-eight, should be thirty-nine?
And so on.
Yeah, down, down through there.
Yep, I see that.
Oh, you're just talking the, the numbering?
Yeah, I guess the numbering doesn't go off a little bit.
Yeah, they're off a little bit.
A lot of sections moving around, but yeah, definitely a good call.
And the other question I had is on violations, penalties, and appearance tickets.
Okay. So we, uh, you know, we talked about removing those sections completely, um, we kept in B and C, and obviously those need to be renumbered to A and B now. But we felt like they, we felt like it, because of how we've set up sidewalk, um, enforcement, it's very likely that we never need to use these.
Yeah.
But we thought, why take something out of our ability to take it? Because it should just roll like clockwork, following this ordinance for sidewalks messed up, you get a letter in the mail, you have the opportunity to fix, you fail to do so, we fix, apply to your taxes, boom, done. But, you know, seen some crazier things where somebody just, you know, they go out there, we fix it, we put it on their ta- taxes, they go out with a jackhammer, rip it back out, and they hate the government.
Yep.
Now, now we might need to take it. Now we might be in the ticketing world.
Yep.
So, that's, why not, you know?
Now, A says, says, on determination of a violation, if we, if we just start with B, the owner says, uh, who commits, participates in and assists such violation, what, such violation of what? That's referring to a previous violation. I'm wondering if we just reworded that a little bit.
On the new A?
Yeah, on the new A. It's to say violation of this section or something.
Okay. Review language.
Yeah. It makes sense with A in there, but we're taking A out, so.
Okay.
Shit.
Doesn't make sense with A out.
Anyone have anything else?
Also?
Race every?
Nope, I'm done.
Those were good edits. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, can we move on to private roads?
All right, this is the one that we've probably been spending the most time on, cause it's the most complex, and there's the most agencies involved, cause everyone, a lot of people, a lot of people and a lot of agencies touch roads, you know, the, the drainage commission's got a piece on this, the road commission's got a piece because we're trying to make this private here, and we're trying not to cause, uh, conflict down the road. Legal is involved, we're getting some language from them, which we're still out on, and that is highlighted in the blue highlights, and there's some green text laying everyone know that, you know, legal isn't reviewing this section. The copy that was on the desk for everyone today was following a number of edits from the drain commission. So we moved, we had them review this section that was at the end, which was fifty-eight forty-six in your packet, ditch maintenance, erosion control, and vegetation standards, because the engineers, when they, uh, Pryne and Newhoff, when they put in their construction standards, they covered a number of drainage aspects, so then we were kind of double tapping drainage. So we had the drainage, uh, commission review both construction standards and drainage standards, see where things were duplicated, recommended removing some of the duplications, and then in your new one, we created a twenty-two and, I think you made twenty-three that further identified drainage requirements, and it puts it all in the construction, uh, section, so everything's just nice and together there. Oh, it, it doesn't, that, it, this was our edit as of today, so I must have made those edits after, so it's not even including that, but that's what we did. So that's how it's gonna read now. And then we are still working on this table in the construction. You can see storm water control. We're gonna create a quick synopsis of those drainage standards and apply them under the different categories of the road size. I don't like how this table is being divided to by these different pages. We'll space that out correctly, cause that just doesn't read well. But this table's gotta be built out a little bit more. We want this to be a quick reference for any developer, layperson to see like, okay, if I go, if I bump up to this next category, how much more of a burden is that gonna be on my development process? And then they can go below to look into all the specifics.
I think it's coming together pretty well, Miles.
Yeah, it's, it's coming together, um. Mr. Severy, we did talk about, you know, the getting rid of the one household to the two household.
Oh, yeah.
We made that change, um.
Oh, you did, okay, so one, the one that was sent to us that hadn't been made.
The one in your packet here?
Yeah. I printed that off this afternoon.
Okay, well, let us know. Give me, give me your marked up edits in case you missed one, cause I'm looking in the table and it was made, so maybe we mixed it in the text, but we made it in the table. That's another thing that's hard. There's a lot of interrelated sections here, so we're trying to make sure we're not making any mistakes as we, um, relate things. Okay. Another point, um, again, is for small private roads, we right now have the maximum distance as a thousand feet. For large private roads, we have at two thousand feet, um. We have those highlighted. If you think those are appropriate, let us know.
Sorry, four.
Four, sorry.
Six.
Four out of eight. But, um, yeah, the, the county for their multi-shared drives, they have a max of six hundred and sixty feet, but their multi-shared drive ordinance only serves like four or five households, where we're attempting to serve up to twelve, so we went a little bit farther with our, our max category, which are large drives. And twelve was the number of households we landed on, where we felt like that was a small enough number to build consensus between households, but, um, not, you know, anything past that. We felt like it just needed to be a pro, a public road at that point.
So if we're, if we're driving back to twelve, we had fourteen to start with. On page three, we still reference fourteen.
Okay, we need to get that fixed.
Private roads, that's three to fourteen, it should be three to twelve, we're gonna cut back to twelve.
Where are we at? Oh, on the definition?
Yeah, private road, yeah.
Cause in the table, we got it at twelve, but that's a good catch. That's what we're looking for. Cause in the table, we got it at twelve, but that's a good catch. That's what we're looking for. Yep, and that's highlighted there too, so we would have, yeah.
Yep.
So that needs to be twelve. And again, not seeking action on this, please give us a thorough read. We obviously need as many eyes on this one as we can, cause it's a lot of interrelated things going on here. Um. We had the Road Commission give us a look over drainage, give us a look over. And even that little mistake right there wasn't caught by us or them.
I circled the row.
Okay.
Nope, back to the other page. It's a little tiny circle, just a little misprint, I think.
Okay, yeah, I don't know what that is.
Is that the dash in? Yeah.
I don't know what that is. That's weird. Cool.
I didn't know what to call it, so I better just hand it to you.
I got the circle, I'm gonna put fix.
Okay, fix what?
Well, he probably sees we removed it.
All right, so we feel like this is coming along, we're hoping with, uh, with what our timeline is with, uh, legal Drain Commission Engineering right now. The second meeting in October, the sidewalk and this ordinance will be in a completely finished state. We'll probably bring the health one back next time, and on the tenth meeting for a vote, the health and wellness one. But again, we don't, we're not gonna have two built out of the packet, because we'll be making that packet while we're at a conference. So, that's why these will be coming back the second meeting in October. But that puts them at the board, um, you know, by November, December. No one's gonna be doing anything with sidewalks to the spring, so.
That's the big spring project. I had some other, some other comments on this thing too, because when I started reading through this thing today, we're talking about streets and roads. I think we need to separate the two, because the street is a, is in a dedicated public right of way.
Yep.
A road is not.
Yep.
And so I think, you know, even, we can leave the title Streets and Roads, cause we talked about private roads later. But I think we need to separate out, like in, on specifications. Street and roads right of way. I'd take out the road right of way, and just say street right of way. And for that whole paragraph, because it says, "If street rights of way shall conform to the adopted master plan," but we don't have an adopted master plan for private roads. And, and they don't have rights of way anyway. They've got an easement or whatever it is. So, I think to clarify, we just talked about this section here just being streets. And take the reference to roads out, and two, we get down to private roads, then we talk about roads.
That's a good call.
And then.
Just make sure you give me that copy that you got marked up there.
Um, and then when we get to, I'll change this fourteen to twelve, too, you've already done it.
So he's talking about some of the section prior to us even getting into the private roads language.
Yeah.
That, that way, and we want, that's, we want consistency between things. That's how we don't build loopholes into some of this language.
Yeah. And in, in the definition for private drive, I read through that several times, because it was really confusing to me. When I read through it several times, it sounded to me like a private drive can only service properties that have frontage on a. Private road or a public road, which doesn't make any sense.
That is what we're saying.
But if it's got, if, if the lot has got access to a private road or a public road, why do you need a private drive?
The drive is how you're getting like from the public road or the private road to your garage.
But if a lot has got access to a public road, they should just have a, a single driveway go out to the public road.
It, it would be a single driveway, unless it's the case of they want a private drive, cause it's two households. They need, they need a private drive to both garages.
Right, but then the private drive has one access to the main road.
Has one access to the main road.
And it splits off after you get on the private property.
It splits off, I mean ideally.
So, I guess I'm, to my thinking is, is that if a lot has got access, or two lots have access to a public road. They have no need for a private road or a private drive.
Unless it's in that two, unless it's in that flag lot with a parcel next to it, situation where they have one access off, and then it splits on two, it creates kind of like a wide. Then they would. We're just trying, and the whole purpose behind that is because we don't want a parcel. That has no frontage, like a landlot, but let me show you a good example. Think of a good one off the top of my head here. That's why some of this language, I get it, it's so wonky, it's because we're thinking about a real life scenario we're trying to prevent. So let's just say this is a buildable lot and not super wet, um, and this property has a driveway. What we're trying to prevent is them having a driveway, and then this property building off of theirs all the way back. And getting a driveway like that. If they're going that far of a distance, we are gonna need, even if they do it off here and build some kind of private road. To get the road frontage we need, and then building a driveway off of that. But without some language in there specifying that this landlocked parcel has to have some kind of frontage. In theory, if one of these guys had a driveway, we'd be allowing that situation. And that's some of the, that's some of the scenarios we've been trying to think through, and me and John were talking earlier about. How is this gonna affect the northern role part of Bath? That's the part of Bath we're trying to protect from some of this build out.
Well, one of the examples that I think I sketched out for you the other day was, if somebody owns that, that rectangle parcel. And actually has a public road going across it, or, or one edge.
Yeah.
Peacock Road actually runs all the way.
Yeah, let's say this runs, okay.
And then they, and they own the whole thing, and he wants to split that into four parcels.
Yes.
So the two easily parcels would not have frontage on a public road or a private road.
Yeah, if they split it like this, but we would never allow that split, because it'd be a landlocked parcel.
So I. I mean, if they split it and actually get an easement across those parcels to get access to it, they couldn't do that?
No, cause they, even though they have access, they don't have frontage. Access and frontage are two different things.
I agree, but why do they need frontage?
It's what our ordinance requires.
But do we need, I mean, I guess, I guess my thought is, is making it so they can't develop those last two lots in any way, even with private road or anything else.
Well, we wouldn't, there would never be two lots in the first place, cause we can't break them out right now. But if we could break them out right now, we, we, in theory, it was in this hypothetical world where you didn't need frontage. If they could be broken out, I would say we would want a road to at some point be, or a driver, or whatever it was to come in, cause. Why are we breaking out parcels if we're never gonna build on them?
Right.
So I don't know, the, the language is just, I, I know it's a little wonky and it reads a little weird, but it's because it's trying to protect from a scenario. A, a what-if scenario, which what-if scenarios are hard, because it's like. You're protecting from something that may never happen, but. People, I will say, will, they will do anything to get around anything.
Sometimes, yeah.
I guess, I guess my concern is if somebody's got some property, they can't put in a private drive. Unless those lots have access to a public road or. And if they do.
Yeah.
And if they do, why do they need private drive?
Cause it could be the scenario of like, let's say that, this, this would be a good example. Let's say they have this super thin piece here, and this is, this is too far. Let's say, it just makes sense, let's say these people want their driveway. They already have a driveway going here. And so these people wanna stub a driveway here to theirs, and they could do that. So even though they both have access, that's the configuration they wanna go into. I get to your point, why not just have both of them do drives? The benefit of that is now we don't have so many people having driveways off to the street, especially in this flag lot scenario. It's a benefit to flag lots. It reduces traffic, it reduces people making turns, that helps flow.
Okay. Enough on that. Uh, on the next section, and kind of down through here, we talked about the purpose. We need to add private drives in there, I think. We've got private roads and private drives.
Which one are we missing? We're missing drives.
Missing drives there, some places, and further down.
Good call.
But in the, in that, that paragraph, it's the only one there. Then it says, "Private drive and, and road permitting process," which is fine. And number two. Oh, I know, you were, I think you may have corrected this already this morning. Private drive services two households, shared, shared driveways. I don't know if we need shared driveways in there or not.
You don't think we need shared driveways?
Yeah.
Okay.
Shall be reviewed, just past tense. And then.
Reviewed, yeah.
Three, I don't know exactly what that means.
Okay, three. Provide the principal means of access to any budding lot or parcel of land without direct street frontage. It's similar to what it was saying, uh, earlier in the definition, it's just kinda restating it there.
What's an internal drive, and I guess that's the question. That'd be for development or something.
Yep.
You're taking internal out though, right?
No, we went internal on like, uh, East Lansing Storage would be a good, uh, good. They have that drive that they built through East Lansing Storage through the Somerset Drive, that provides internal access. But East Lansing Storage also has frontage and other means of access. So, but they couldn't do that, they didn't have frontage and other access.
Okay, so that can't be their primary access, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. And this next one says, "Private road," we need to add drives in there, and a lot of these down through here have the same thing. It talks about either road or, or drive, should mention both of them.
It shouldn't mention both of them?
Yeah, I think it should.
Yeah, you know, it shouldn't, right? Because, and that's our bad, cause I'm seeing that drives is in here, but shouldn't be, because this is road and permitting process.
But shouldn't, it should have, but I don't think you have to get a permit for a private drive too?
Yeah, from the Road Commission, they would.
Yes. Not from us.
Not from us, from the Road Commission. I mean, they already need one from you guys for a private road. They already need a private road permit, but the Road Commission will still approve their access. As a driveway permit.
Right.
Off of the public road. So, you could keep driving there.
I would think, because, because we've got the standards back here for construction with private drive. That's in your chart.
Yeah.
So I would think we should, this whole section should include both, I think.
Yeah. It should, and you're right.
And you're obviously gonna fix the numbering in that one?
Where are we at?
Well, no.
One, two, two, three, four, or five.
Oh, yeah, there's number, yeah, I missed it.
Where are we at?
Right here, yeah. You got two twos in a row here.
Oh, great.
Yeah, that goes all, all the next page, and number seven, we go, eh. Eh, the private drive in there also. Four. Okay. And then down to fifty, fifty-eight, forty-four. That talks about private roads. Shouldn't we have the same requirement for private drive? That they, that the two people have got to sign some agreement, that they're gonna maintain that?
We felt like that once you have the least barrier entry, so we didn't wanna get into all the legal agreements when it's just two parties involved. We feel like if like two homeowners are sharing a drive, can't self-regulate, then like all humanities doomed. Me Creek's making a good case for it. Me Creek's making a good case for it.
Always.
That's as far as I got on this new one. You got, you got my other comment from, from before.
Yep, and we made a lot of those changes on this one here.
Finish reading through the rest of this thing.
Yeah, read through and just let us know, um, we got, we're giving ourselves about a month here to give a hard push for this. And please, everyone else, give it a thorough read and just send us a marked up copy.
You've made more changes for, for the Drain Commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
Can you send that latest one out to us then?
Yeah, that's a good call.
Review that one instead.
Uh, we'll make all of our additional edits tomorrow that we have, and we'll send out a latest copy, so you guys can have that one through here, thank you. That's a good call.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
Are you? One thing that hasn't been brought up here, that I, as the chairman, I feel it's my position to be the moderator. But I would like to express my opinion about this private road thing.
Oh, yeah.
I think this could be a real game changer for the rural area of Bath, and we hear a lot from the residents that they wanna preserve the rural area of Bath. And I don't really see who this private road thing is gonna benefit, except for a developer. It's certainly not gonna benefit the homeowner per se, cause if you're gonna build out the rural area of Bath. You better have a substantial income to be able to afford to live in the rural area of Bath, because it's expensive to learn, live in a rural area. Transportation is a cost, utilities are a cost. Every time you wanna go someplace, it's a cost. If I wanna go to the store, it's usually at least twenty mile round trip. And you're not gonna have low-income people moving out in the rural area of Bath. And doing a private road is not gonna help anybody that's looking for affordable housing, in my opinion.
I, I can see the argument of, um, not wanting to incentivize sprawl into the rural area. Would this be something where we could maybe, maybe still allow the drives to? You know, cause there are some interesting situations up there where I could see a drive being beneficial, but maybe we could just say like, write in the definition. Or, and additionally in our table, um, no private roads permitted within the rural district. At least for now, as it gets implemented, that way we can see what effect this has in our other districts, and if you wanna come back two years from now and amend that. You, you could do so.
I think that would be practical, but I think in absence of a current master plan that says, this is the way we'd like to see Bath developed. I don't think that we should be going pell-mill down the road to creating private roads.
I could see your point where like, a, a farmer that has a forty-acre parcel could be approached by a developer.
Yep. And I've got some of that.
Private road. In the rural area, and that, that could incentivize sprawl. And that was one, that was one of Dan's concerns with these private roads, is like.
Yep.
What are the effects it's gonna have on the homeowner? So, but that's, that's a decision for the board. I mean, there's pros and cons, right? So like, the con is you could stifle growth within your community, you could stifle housing supply. The con, those are cons. The pro is you would disincentivize sprawl. And you would disincentivize growth patterns that, um, could have. Negative effects on the traditional farming sector in the north.
Well, I don't really think we're much of a farming community anymore. There's only a couple of farms left in Bath Township. But there are a lot of woodlots, and there are a lot of lowland that probably really shouldn't be developed.
A devi-, yeah, I mean, a developer would argue, you know, that.
Well, I know, anything is buildable, yes, I know. Uh, Ryan, I know there's been a little bit of discussion about doing a new master plan for Bath Township. Is that anything that's on the radar for the board?
No, not a master plan. We've been talking about a strategic.
Strategic plan, okay. I kind of equate them, but maybe.
What's the difference?
Maybe, let's, what's the difference?
Well, strategic plan is more about goals, where the township needs, wants to go. Not necessarily about land use or building. I mean, that could be part of it, but. You know, we wanna expand programs for youth, might be something in a strategic plan that wouldn't fit in a master plan.
Okay.
I just see, we don't have either, so I just.
We don't.
We, we have a, we have a master plan. It's called, in our community, it's called a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, but it's really old.
No, it's, it was approved in, uh, twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-two. And now we'll ride that through to twenty twenty-seven. We'll start working on an update in twenty twenty-six.
But it didn't address rural development, as I recall.
It, I, I, I mean, there's a master plan, there's goals for the rural sector. So, uh, one of the goals for the rural sector was to maintain the character of the rural sector, and that's why I think your concern is valid.
That's kind of a nebulous term, though. Maintain the characters.
Well, yeah, and I mean, all the goals and priorities of the comprehensive plan for Bath Township are similar to other communities where they're five thousand foot view. You know?
Yeah, right.
That's why Bath is kinda known, um, for its rural.
But I, what originally brought this to the planning commission was, a developer said he would like to build more affordable housing. And felt this was a tool that would enable him to do more affordable housing. I would question that that, that this tool would enable more affordable housing to be built in Bath.
A private road?
Affordable housing was like a million dollar home versus a two hundred thousand dollar home?
Yes.
I wouldn't call either of those affordable housing.
I don't think anybody in Bath's building two hundred thousand dollars either, Ryan.
Well, right, they should be. That's the, one of the things that's lacking. Isn't that the, the crux of this?
That's the crux of the argument, yeah.
Like, one large or two, three large versus.
Yeah, it was like.
Not like affordable housing by the term that.
Yeah, it'd be like middle class to upper middle class. Yeah, it'd be like, middle class to upper middle class housing versus like, you know, ten percent housing.
Yeah. Still unaffordable for many families.
Yeah, I mean, housing is just gone absolutely bananas in this country, as we all know, um, and the crux of the developers' argument, which by the way, was taking place in the low-density development district, so not the rural district. And, but, um, was to build, it was twelve to fourteen homes, utilizing two different private drives, uh, s- uh, spoking off of one area that's not developed, and another private drive that's currently established, but the parcels are unable to be divided out because of our uh, parcel division language, um, to develop twelve to fourteen homes. As it stands right now, if that wasn't a possibility, it would be four homes, and for the uh, residential construction pro forma, to, for the math to work out, if you were only going to develop four homes, I think the minimum price point you could probably develop that would be like seven hundred and fifty thousand and up.
Oh, I'm sure. I think the, the bigger issue that I see here is that the road commission says we need curb and gutter and paved road. And I think that a gravel road is a very environmentally friendly alternative, let me put it that way.
Yeah.
And I think the problem is more getting the road commission to say, you can build a public gravel road, than it is for us to create a whole bunch of private roads to enable people to subdivide rural lots.
Yeah, the road, and I, I, I agree with that, um, the feedback though, that we got from the road commission, for, you know, their board has been a little tricky on several things we're working on right now, is their board's unwilling to create that lower tier standard.
Yeah, I, I'm well aware of that.
Why is that, you think?
They don't see a need to change, and they, they're worried that if they made that change within Bath Township, there'd be, because we're thinking about the township, and to John's point, we're thinking about how is this gonna affect not only the south, but the north? The road commission's thinking, how's this gonna affect Victor Township, how's this gonna affect Saint John's, and they're thinking about the whole county. So, for every, as worried as we are about what minor changes or even major, I would argue this is major, but whatever major change we're gonna make to our standards and the spin-off effects it will have in this community, they're worried about the whole county. So that's where their reservation is coming in, I guess, I can't speak for them, you know? I think they're, I, I agree, John, I think they're being overly hesitant, and I think they're, um, they're stifling the county's growth, especially in the south, where we are experiencing growth pressures.
I, I think if we want to strive for more affordable housing, we should be looking at more cluster housing and a green space.
Yeah, agreed, I mean, that's why our PUD language, we, we really like.
Created the PUD language.
Again, again, though, you know, the, the barrier to entry with using the PUD language, which if anybody watches this video and doesn't know what that means, is a, um,
Planned Unit Development.
Development, I blinked there for a second, uh, Plan Unit Development, um, there's barriers to entry with that too, so I think that is a more efficient way to build, but you have to have the startup capital to build one of those neighborhoods, I mean, just going through the plan, the planning phase for a PUD, you're gonna be at least a hundred thousand dollars in before a shovel hits dirt.
Correct.
Where, you know, allowing the private drive to allow four parcels to be split out, you know, you could probably get that drawn up and get surveyed for under fifty thousand. So, it's just a barrier to entry thing. I, I agree, I mean, I think PUDs are great, I think that's where Bath Township's seen the majority of its growth.
Well, it all has to do with.
It's money, it's startup capital. It's startup capital.
Well, I understand that, but if your goal is to provide more affordable housing, I don't know that this is the best approach to probably.
Well, because of how the PUDs are being built out these days, I mean, our, our densest PUD right now is the one that HDI's building out behind that McDonald's and all that on Marsh Road, and, I mean, they are on eighth of an acre lots, and those houses are tight, they're as tight as you can go, they have a five-foot setback between each other, I mean, it's a minimum allowed by fire code, and they're now all starting at the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar price point.
And they're that close together?
I mean, you're paying for the home, you're not paying for the yard, if anything, the homeowners probably see it as a benefit that they don't have to move a yard.
See, when I was buying a house, I always thought, you know what, I want a nice big yard, biggest I can afford. I don't know about you guys, but that was what I looked at first, you know, didn't look at the amount of bedrooms, I didn't look at the square footage of the house, how big's the yard?
Different, different kind of buyer, but to your, to John's point, I mean, there is still that buyer out there, and that's driving up the cost of our homes in the north.
Right, and the ones I see around by me have got several acres of yard, and in a lot of cases, they're irrigated, which really bothers me, because our well water, uh, reserves are being drawn down faster than they're being renewed.
Yeah.
Water table.
The water table.
Example would be the Meyer Development.
Yeah, but John's talking about even some of these people that buy properties up north in northern Bath, and then they come into a wooded lot, they clearcut, you know, ten acres around their house, and now they're growing grass, and they've got a sprinkler system sprinkling all ten acres.
That's why we need to clearcut any words.
Well, well, even our clearcut ordinance, so we were never entertaining, uh, residential properties. You start telling homeowners what they can do with their house, I mean, you get real dangerous territory.
Yeah, sure can.
Well, your suggestion, John, is we just don't allow private drives in the rural zone property, right?
That would be one workaround, yes, I guess, Ray, I, I don't know, I, uh, the goal I was told was we want to make it possible for developers to build more affordable housing, and I don't know that this is the tool that's gonna enable that to happen.
I don't even know if that's, like, I feel like we've sort of been forced into this conversation, I don't know that there is necessarily a goal that anyone within the township has set, maybe it's the homeowner's goal, or the property owner's goal. But like, I don't think we as a board or township staff have said like, we're trying to achieve this, I think we're just being responsive to the legal requests that came before us.
Well, that is correct, yes, yes, and I, I concur.
That's correct. So, I have a silly question, um, in regards to private roads. How did those two sections come about over in Hawk Hollow? The one that goes from Ann Drive to, uh, Mulligan, whatever? I mean, it's like, it's from here to the parking lot, it's a private road. I don't understand that, why, why is that there even? And why did it, and why and how did it come about? Was it all private in there at one time? Or not? And if not, then why in the hell is that one section? I mean, it's not even an eighth of a mile.
This little section right here.
Correct, right there.
That, that's public.
Actually, the one that goes straight north, Miles, that one. That right there, yeah, that right there is private road, right there.
Yes, it is, I, I, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna admit to this, I was on the planning commission at that time, Ray. I, I think that it was a complete oversight on our part that those people owned to the center of the road. There are three parcels on one side, one parcel on the other side. I was oblivious to the fact that they owned to the center of the road, quite honestly. And I think everybody else was as well. In fact, it was a total oversight on our part.
Well, there are private roads out there too.
Yeah, there's another one that goes back down in, that's a cul-de-sac.
Well, she right, right there, cul-de-sac there, that's a private road.
Yes.
Yep.
That's part of the subdivision.
Yeah, the homeowner association is, is, has been working, I think, to make that become a public road.
Yes, they have.
Where I live, when I moved in, that was a private road.
Yes, it was.
I guess they don't understand why, why was that made a private road?
The road commission won't take this over until the build-out is complete. They're, they're almost done, if they're not done by this year, they will be done by the end of next year. The, and the reason they don't take it over is like, in case the developer brings in a bulldozer and it tracks till we destroy the road, the public doesn't want to be on the hook for this.
That's okay.
The other concern is, it was the road built to county standards, right, it's built, because the other one is at the other end.
I guess.
The Hamlet, at the north end of Classic Drive?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's a, that's a private road also.
Isn't that where Karen lives, up in there?
Yes, it is.
Yep, and that's just on whoever developed this, Al, if these, if these aren't done yet, which I, I can.
They can't be done, those are unbuildable lots.
Okay, those are unbuildable, so if, if we're done here, then the developer, Mr. Councillor, needs to get with the road commission.
Right.
Um, and go through the process for adoption.
I think they are doing that now.
Well, what about directly south, Classic Drive there?
That's public.
Uh, why are there no sidewalks there?
It wasn't required at the development at the time.
At the time, but now it is, it appears.
Yeah, of course, if it comes in now, but we can't retroactive, we go back and say, you can't do that with anything, you can't say like, hey, we know you were approved by the plan, I mean, you can, but I think you'll get sued. But, um, you can't go back and say, hey, like, I know that we approved this ten years ago on this layout, but actually now we want you to come.
Oh, no, 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 that's not what I'm saying at all, I'm just, I'm totally, uh.
It's just how it was approved at the time, I mean, there, there's a couple like that in township.
To me, just preface you, you know, when I drive through there, I'm thinking, holy crap, these houses are like six, eight hundred thousand dollar houses, and there's no sidewalks, it just seems goofy.
But now we do have the ability to have that right.
I mean, because that to me adds value to a home, is having a nice, nice sidewalk in front of it.
I mean, even, we're working with Mr. Councillor right now to get Food Court Lane, um, made, this is always intended to be a public road, built a public road spec, built for the emergency turnaround, still private, it's just the paperwork hasn't been filed.
Well, that's a Class A road, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's theoretically the ingress of the.
And that's, that's why, for zoning reasons, that, if, and it's not even about that project, if this is ever to become anything, this needs to be a public road, it was always built to be a public road, let's just do the paperwork. So, sometimes developers forget about the paperwork side of things, so.
Developers or the com, the, the county?
The developers, the county will do it, the road commission, but you have to approach them, the road commission isn't gonna chase you down to take on roads.
Right. Okay. Never mind, I was just gonna say, where are we at on the agenda? I forget.
Okay, yeah, sorry, we got a little bit off topic there.
Well, we did, we did.
Oh, it was private drives, that's.
We're still talking about private drives.
Yep.
Anyhow, that's my speech. So, let's have a little discussion about snow removal, oh, go ahead.
Close the public.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Close the public hearing, thank you, thank you, I did forget about. I had to close the public hearing, so, sorry, no more public comment.
It was a while ago.
That was a while. Thank you.
Break, close the planning, or close the public hearing.
Okay. Um.
This is kind of a pet peeve of mine, I guess.
Yeah, John, you just wanted to.
Do you, you want me to, or you?
Yeah, I, I think you got it, this is, you brought, just.
I brought this up, I talked with Karen about this, uh, earlier last week. The DPW has been plowing the sidewalk on Webster Road for the last several years, uh, between Drumhiller and Clark Road. The school has been plowing the drive, the sidewalks in the school area. Uh, if this sidewalk ordinance is put into effect in its present form, that's gonna have to cease and desist, because those property owners are all gonna have to be taking care of the snow removal on those properties. And we all know what can happen when you take away something from somebody that they've had for several years as an entitlement.
You're talking to public?
Yeah.
Expectation of having their snow removed.
Yeah, exactly, there you go, George, thank you.
Well, and also, you know, we, uh, not to, uh, chime in here again, but we talked about doing that, uh, marketing campaign, where following whatever policies the township ends up coming up with here through the winter and into the spring, uh, doing a noticing campaign, saying like, hey, these are the policies, you, it, it would say in the hypothetical situation where the burden is placed on the homeowners, like, this ordinance will be strictly enforced, so next winter rolls around, big snow comes, they don't get out there and shovel it, they're going to get a ticket in the mail. And if this rolls out in its current iteration.
Happens all over America.
Yeah, who, uh, say, Ryan, in your subdivision, Meek Creek, who, who does the sidewalks, are you guys? Private landowners? See, me, I've, in Lan-, I lived in Lansing when I was a kid, but we had those little city plows come through, you know, into the sidewalk, so I'd never thought about it. We did, you know, from the house out to the main sidewalk, that was it. So.
So who pays for the other?
Who pays for what other?
Who pays for the frontage to be shoveled, the city?
Um, I, I don't know who pays for it, but the city did do it, in my neighborhood. They had those weird little bond partyes, you know, with the bee plowing.
So I live out in the country, I pay to have your sidewalks cleaned off?
Not unless you pay Lansing City.
Didn't do that.
I'm just giving a, an example.
Well, I, I, I'm just giving you an answer.
So I, I guess my, there are pros and cons, I have seen it both ways, more often than not, I've always, and I've said this at the meetings, I've seen it, the burden's been placed on the homeowner, and there's an ordinance enforcement regime that goes around that, um, to John's point, the, the cons of that are, it could be disruptive, so I, especially in the first year or two, there will probably be some compliance issues, people are gonna be mad, probably come to the board about it, um, uh, the one benefit to John's, uh, suggestion of having some kind of municipal, uh, situation where we either set up districts, and people are assessed for those causes, or there's some kind of, uh, it comes out of the general fund, or you can set up a millage for this type of service, there's different ways to fund it. But, and, and a millage, you know, couldn't, it, it might not be a bad idea, because then you get the community's sense of how, though, like, how much do they feel like it's worth it for them not to do it themselves? But if you, if you do it, if you do it for them, then you won't run into that everyone's pissed issue. Then you might be, everyone might be pissed that they're paying more of a millage, or they're paying more in taxes. The other problem is, especially with the aging demographics in Clinton County as a whole, but it's particularly in maybe downtown, quote-unquote, Bath, you might have some people that are physically unable to take care of the sidewalks.
Can I make a suggestion?
And so then you're doing enforcement on like a old lady.
If you're, I, I guess we have a legacy, I'll call it a legacy district, that, as you stated, DPW plows a little bit, school plows a little bit. I, I guess I would suggest, seeing as how this is all new, um, that legacy district be grandfathered in somehow. And, well, I'm, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, I know.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, just so you can categorize that and get a, get a handle on it, you know, how much did DPW, uh, generally speaking, how much do they, do they, uh, spend doing that, you know?
I, I don't know, I haven't gotten an answer from that, I asked that question.
What do we, John, just because this is an interesting discussion, and this is one of those hot button issues, how do you feel about, and we do have some time here, you know, to review this? What do you think about inviting Ben Zeep to the planning commission, and having this discussion with him present, to go over what they do, and then what, what their capacity would look like?
Well, I, I think there's a way, several ways to approach this, quite honestly, Miles. And, and I guess, part of my concern, and I tried to get some numbers from Karen, and she's really busy with the budget process, and I understand that.
Budgeting time of year.
The budget time, yeah.
There's gonna be a cost to enforce this, because it's gonna require somebody pretty much full-time every time there's a snowstorm.
Well, that, that's true, and that was a good point that you brought up before, when you had your discussion with Karen, and John's not wrong, um, especially in the first year or two. You know, if, if you are gonna enforce this ordinance strictly, enforcement is time-consuming. You're writing letters, you're doing certified mail, every mailing that's certified is eight, nine dollars a mailing, you have to do a whole neighborhood. Uh, you know, Kevin's gotta do follow-up calls with these people, so it's, the taxpayer will be paying for, on the enforcement side of things.
One way or another.
Especially in the first couple of years, now, I think the goal would be, you know, hopefully people get with the program after a winter or two. And enforcement goes down over time, you know?
Well, I'm sure it probably will.
You get returns on investment over time.
I'm sure that's, that's correct. We also have a number of people that live in that district that go away for several weeks or months during the winter. There's people in that district that, like Miles said, are not gonna be physically able to plow the snow or do the snow, so they're gonna have to hire someone.
They would have to hire, and that's an additional burden.
That's an additional burden. And there's also sidewalks that the DPW is gonna have to plow in that area, because they're township properties.
That's true as well, they'll be in the vicinity doing some of the work too, so.
So, like at the pumping stations and the like?
Well, the parks.
The parks.
In the park, yeah.
And there's a piece of property that the township owns, that's used to be the railroad right away there.
Oh, right downtown.
Several properties on Main Street, yeah.
Yeah. And the, uh, the little, uh, garden is.
Genesee Township, my father-in-law lives there, they've got a millage for senior citizens, trying to keep them in their homes. Um, so, mowing, snow removal, even housekeeping is under that millage, and they've got a group that. And they've got a group that takes care of that one. And so he doesn't have to do that anymore, he's ninety. Um, and, but it keeps him in the house, um, versus having to go to a nursing home. He's just, believe me, he'd still be doing it, and scares my wife. But again, they put a millage up and it passed and.
Surprised.
They get on the list.
Millages don't normally pass for those kinds of things. Well, one of the objects of the D, uh, the DDA was they were gonna do the sidewalks and snow plowing and all that in the DDA district, that captured tax.
And how, and I don't know this answer, John, but just, cause I'm trying to think about people's willingness to do this work, or people's willingness to work collectively. And that's one good thing about millage, is you kind of figure out what people's willingness is through a vote to work collectively, but how did that functionally work over the thirteen to fifteen years downtown in your experience? Like, yeah, was it plow, did they do a good job plowing the sidewalks?
We, the D, the DDA never did anything.
Oh, okay.
Nothing.
Okay. I, I, I honestly didn't know, I wasn't here when the DDA was at present, so.
They didn't have money for like the first decade.
Okay.
Right, wasn't properly collected for the first decade.
Yeah.
And then, once it was properly collected, there was a pot of money, but nobody did anything with the pot of money, which is
Okay.
Why the board and the county and the township and the, uh, state of Michigan got kind of.
Frustrated, sure. And I would be frustrated if I was paying into DDA and nothing was happening.
Right.
So we separate this district here from the districts, the other sidewalk areas? Is that what you're discussing, what I'm understanding?
I mean, that would be, that would be one way, um, but if you were going to go that way, it'd be, I, I feel like you wanna do a special assessment on that district would be the way to fund that. Cause they're, they're getting the most direct benefit.
Yeah, just like we do lighting districts.
So, so could the districts vote on a district to have that done?
Oh, yeah, they'd have.
They would, yeah, they would have to vote. Uh, and it would be good to get, even if they don't have to vote, I mean, this is a little about, they don't have to vote, yeah. But even if they don't have to, it could be good, e- even if we do a survey, just to get a sense of the willingness in the area. Cause you never know, you might conduct a survey and get an eighty percent response rate saying, I'd rather do my own than pay.
Right.
You just don't know.
And that way, they also know they need to do it.
They don't.
Yeah, 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 surveys could help with the marketing.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that there's political will on the part of the board to implement such a program, just as being politically correct.
What do we think about that? What do we think about doing a survey, John?
I don't know. What's the feeling of the board?
What would the survey be?
Uh, it'd be a real simple, like, five-question-long survey, like, and we'd probably go door-to-door and just do it by hand, cause I feel like that's probably the lowest hanging fruit way for us to do it, even if we have to shift our hours around and do it like midday on a Saturday, so we get better capture. But we would ask people, if you had to choose between a special assessment of some dollar figure that we could come up with after talking with Ben on what this would entail cost-wise, and then dividing it out between the homes and the district. Would you rather choose between this dollar amount added to your taxes, or would you rather shovel your own sidewalk if it's strictly enforced? Let people choose the two options, see where it comes back.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt.
I think we could do a small survey, um.
Well, if we're gonna do it, I think we should do it as part of the safe walks route to school sidewalks, because if we're gonna do this, the object of the state safe route to school thing was to enable the children to walk to school safely.
Yeah.
So it seems to me as though we should keep the snow plowed on all the safe route to school sidewalks, at least.
The target area I'm envisioning would be, um, the former DDA area on the future land use map, it's called the Activity Center.
Yes, but there's also sidewalks being built along Slate Road, which is not in that district.
Yeah, I wouldn't be, my vision of where we'd be surveying, at least surveying-wise, and you could still do the survey and at least that you could capture opinions and extrapolate those to other areas of the township. You don't have to survey, you know, just like any survey, you only get a sample size, you don't have to survey a hundred percent of the area you're looking at. But I, it wouldn't be my vision to cover them in that district or survey that area. Like, once you get up into that slate area, you could probably cover slate itself through this, um, potential action we're talking about, but as soon as it makes that turn into that neighborhood, I think that neighborhood should absolutely be doing their own sidewalks.
Yes.
Especially because they have an HOA established there.
Yes, they do.
Which makes it kind of tricky, cause you're having the homeowner that lives right there on Slate Road responsible for all the kids in the neighborhood walking down his.
Well, that's why that this, what, to John's point, this could be advantageous for that neighbor. He might, if he or she might, when they fill out that survey, say, yes, of course, I would like collective action here. I don't wanna be responsible for doing. Cause that neighbor also right on the corner of slate is, has, oh, he's, has a large area that you'd be responsible for. He'd be shoveling, he or she'd be shoveling a hundred and fifty feet of sidewalk.
Well, I think it's gotta be prorated based on the feet of sidewalk on your properties. I don't think it could be a lump sum per property. That doesn't make sense to me.
And I don't know how complicated or granular they can get when they do those, I can't speak to that. I don't know how that, Beth would work that out.
Well, we must, I would imagine somebody knows how much per thousand feet of sidewalk it costs to plow, cause contractors have bitten on this all the time.
No, for sure, and we could, I mean, we have the skill set to go in there and measure how much frontage each person has, but that, that would be getting quite more complex, you know, on how we're sending out bills to people on their taxes.
Yeah, but once it's calculated, it's calculated forever.
Yeah, and then you do the percentage with inflation from there, sure.
Right. But I think we ought to at least take a look at it, okay? That's my opinion.
No, it's fair, so what do we think about, I, again, like, the survey, should we survey these people, or do we wanna bring Ben in and just have a discussion about it? What's the?
I think we gotta bring Karen in, myself. And you wanna bring in Ben, that's fine.
Well, just to get an, an idea of cost.
Yeah.
You know, he, he should have an idea of what that cost is in his budget, you know?
And their capacity to do it, like, would they have to hire somebody during the winter, uh, position that they're currently staff?
What if we have a bad winter where we get snow every other day, you know, that's plowable?
Yeah.
That's, that's a possibility.
Because the DPW, I know their staff goes down in the winter, they were seasonal staff right now, and those, uh, individuals are gonna be cut here in about um, a couple of weeks to a month. And then they go on a skeleton crew in the winter, and even just plowing the stuff we do right now, they end up getting overtime in the winter.
I think Ben even does some of that, you know?
Oh, yeah, they're all on call in the winter.
So that would be, um, assessed per, per section of sidewalk?
That's what John's suggesting.
That's what I would suggest.
If you had five sections, you'd get assessed for, if you had four and a half, you'd run it up to five, or whatever it is.
It'd become more complicated, but yeah, this is a way to do it, for sure.
I mean, you could do it per parcel.
You could do it per parcel as well.
Or, yeah.
If they had five sections, they're, all the sections are the same pretty much, aren't they now?
If you do it per section on the sidewalk, then people pay for how much frontage they got, it's a more direct talk, uh, cost. If you do it per parcel, then it spreads the load, but right now your property taxes are assessed for how much land you own, so it's not, you know.
So someone will have a discussion with the assessor, what's the fairest way, kinda?
Yeah, I mean, uh, just off the top of my head, I think John, to John's point, I think it's the fairest way to do it, I also think it's the most complex way to do it.
Is?
Yeah, is by foot.
But once you calculate it per parcel, it's done.
Yeah, it's done.
You're not gonna have to do it every year.
Yeah, and then you just extrapolate out inflation from there.
And the cost, and, and it may be practical to bid it out and say how much to, for contractors to do it, I don't know.
That would be a talk for Ben, I mean, that's a good question for Ben, that's, I feel like getting Ben here to weigh in on some of this might be.
Right.
I'm trying to speak for people, I don't like doing that, you know?
No. Well, and we know the buck stops at Karen's desk too, so. I mean, it's nice to have Ben give us some input, and maybe it does make a full-time job for another person in Bath, but is that necessarily a bad thing?
Well, no, it's not.
She's gonna pay for it.
You know?
And that's inevitable, if you ever have any growth whatsoever.
Right.
Um, that's one of the things I hear about, you know, uh, working on parks more, you know, who you don't wanna have, you know, who's gonna take care of that trail? You know?
Right.
My, my, uh, exhaustive decades-long, uh, Park Lake Trail has brought that up in numerous, numerous times, you know, who, who's gonna, you know, we don't have the people to, to maintain it, we don't have the people to do this, we don't have the people to do that. And, you know, it comes a time when you have to hire more people, especially when, you know, when you're getting more and more and more households in the, in the community, tax-paying households.
Well, you might get a different quality person too, if it's a full-time, year-round job.
Exactly.
Than if it's four weeks or four months in the summer.
Full truth, full-time workers are easier to recruit, for sure.
Yeah, well, yeah, people want, you know, permanence.
Stability.
Yeah, stability.
So where are we at?
We're still plowing snow, George.
So I, I.
Still discussing.
Are we okay? I think, I feel like I've gotta, just my, the planner Emmy wants to get community feedback via survey.
I think we should.
I would make that motion to, to designate.
Conduct a survey.
Conduct a survey?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, do we, should we get the names?
Can I ask a question?
You had a question? Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
What's the, just of the downtown area, or are we thinking larger scope?
I think we're just talking about the sidewalks affected by the safe route to school.
Okay.
Is that correct, Miles? That was my understanding.
The safe routes to schools?
The side, sidewalks affected by safe routes to school.
Yeah, that would.
Well, it also would have to include the piece of Webster Road, cause that's not in safe routes to school.
It, it's part of it too.
It is part of it.
So, uh, survey conducted in the safe route to school and Webster Road.
You got a question?
Are we getting ahead of talking to the people that actually have to make people pay? Without having a conversation with them.
Well, we don't have a price, but I don't know that.
We'll figure that, that will be the question of the survey, we'll, we'll get a rough dollar.
Are you saying that we should bring it to the board first?
Well, at least have a conversation with.
Karen.
Yeah.
You're just not gonna get consensus from the board.
No.
On any issue.
No, I know.
So I think it'll jam us up more than.
Okay, I, I think.
But if we can come to the board with some evidence and an argument, we're still not gonna get consensus, but I think you'll get more people.
Yeah, I, I don't think at this point we wanna.
That's why, that's why I think the survey is critical though, too, cause like marijuana was a real hot button issue in two thousand eighteen. The only reason anything got done at the board was there was a community survey with a high response rate conducted saying that there was sixty-four percent buy-in for leeway's and marijuana in the township.
Yeah.
Without that survey, I don't think you would've got the same vote.
No, I'm sure you wouldn't have. No, and this board is, they're not gonna have consensus on anything anyhow, so. That's just the way it works.
We can bring, uh, I'll, I'll talk to Ben and Karen about coming back.
Do you wanna do that? You want me to do it?
Our second, you can do it as well, yeah.
I don't care.
Our second meeting, we, I mean, we can both do it. Second meeting in October, we'll bring this topic back with some township staff or?
Karen won't be here.
Oh.
Karen won't be here, but Taylor will be, Taylor will fill in, she's the deputy superintendent.
Yeah, but to your point that the buck stops with Karen, it doesn't stop with Taylor.
Yeah, if we're on bringing, if, if we're gonna bring.
But she's only gonna be gone for two weeks.
Okay.
I'm saying the issue of like hiring new staff and funding things, Taylor's not gonna be able to weigh in on that.
No, no, hiring staff, no, but she should be able to give us numbers of approximate cost.
Ben, Ben is the one who's gonna give you numbers, cause it's his department, yeah. But I don't think it's a bad idea to invite Karen, I was just saying, at this particular date, she's made it clear she's out of.
I forgot, she's on, yeah.
Yeah, she's on vacation.
So maybe, can we bring this topic back early November with some staff?
Well.
You could also start with Ben.
Well, I'll start with Ben.
Okay.
I'll talk to Ben.
We've got like three weeks before the snow starts flying, so we've got some time.
Well, you don't know that.
When it was our, it's not our intention, he's probably.
We're not gonna get this in place this year.
We're not, it's not our intention to get this in place this year.
No, cause we're not gonna build the sidewalks out until next year.
Till twenty twenty-four.
It'll be, it, it'll be an issue in the winter of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Because there'll be all new sidewalks.
And even if we get this ordinance wrapped up prior to that build-out, we'll, we'll say something like this ordinance doesn't take effect till like midsummer of twenty twenty-four. That way we still have time for, cause it's, if the ordinance is done, we don't want to just sit on it, we'll put it through, we'll get on the books, take it back.
Well, we, we really can't do any ordinance enforcement till after the construction's all done, really.
Exactly, so we'll just put a date on when the period for this ordinance starts.
That's gonna be late fall twenty-four probably at best.
And, and we wanna have our noticing period and marketing prior to that too, so everyone knows what to expect.
Yeah, and then you're gonna wanna budget for whatever this will look like, and we're doing that now, so we're probably talking like a January one of twenty
Five.
Would be like the soonest we could kick in if all those things fall.
Right, correct.
Yep. All right, guys, thanks for the feedback, and I, I think we got a good plan in place.
I think so. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, report from the planners, next up on the list.
I'll just go really quickly, um, I wanted to, let's go to the agenda, quickly discuss where we're at with permits this year, so we're, we're kinda having a build-out year, um, I was talking to, uh, Chair Reich about this earlier today. So last, we do these reports, uh, for Karen, whether she wants them or not, um, where we talk about what the department did all year. And, uh, um, one of the key, we have a bunch of key metrics, you know, how many SUPs did we issue? How many code enforcement letters did we send? How many zoning verifications we did? One of the, one of the most keys, how many zoning permits did we issue in that year? So when I first got here, we had a huge backlog of ordinance. And so in that year, we did a hundred and fourteen, but I feel like that year, twenty twenty-one is probably an outlier, cause there's sixty to seventy backlog ordinance is when I first got here. Um, and then our first year of like real steady data would have been twenty twenty-two. And we did a hundred and four zoning permits in that year. Right now, uh, uh, yesterday, we did our a hundred and third zoning permit for this year. So if, if we're on target, we'll probably do about one twenty this year, so we're past last year by about, you know, uh, o- o- eighteen, eighteen, fifteen, yeah, fifteen, eighteen percent. So, um, just to give you guys a sense of where, what we're doing in the planning department, stuff you don't see, and, you know, what our, um, our tempo is. And then communications plan, I just wanted to let you guys know, we've been spending a little bit of time, uh, reviewing kind of what the lay of the land is in the township, and we, we've been doing a little bit of driving around recently, uh, letting Lexi and Kate know. Um, you know, where, where is Saginaw Highway, what's on Saginaw Highway, where's the Four Corners of Bath, since they're not from Bath, making any sense. And when I was driving around, I just, I try to put my blinders on sometimes and not look at all the code enforcement violations that I see everywhere in the world and all the other planning issues, uh, they're nu- numerous, but, um.
Don't go to Horex.
Yeah, I, yeah, if you go to Horex, it's crazy, look at the electrical in there. Um, anyways, so we are, me and Taylor are talking about when we send out our next, uh, you know, tax statement or spring mailing to include some kind of flyer to let people know that decks, sheds, fences, these are things that require a zoning permit. We've seen kind of a, a mindset in the township that we've been a little light on enforcement in recent years. And I'm worried that the pendulum has swung too far on the complaint-based only enforcement, to the point where people are just, it's a wild west out there. And people are putting sheds on property they don't own, they're putting fences on property they don't own, because these things aren't being vetted via zoning permit. And then it causes conflict with neighbors, because then some, there's a lot of turnover in housing right now in the township, somebody comes in, they get a survey, and, um, they're like, hey, man, your shed's on my property, and they're like, I've lived here for fifty years, I know where my property line is, how dare you? And, you know, the whole point of zoning is to reduce conflict, and we can't do that if people aren't filling out zoning permits, so that's our plan. We just wanna, uh, conduct a, some communication about what's required, and if you guys could also, you have your feelers on the community, uh, as you're having these discussions with neighbors, let them know, you know, what, hey, you get a shed, man, you really need to go up to the township and get a zoning permit for it.
When you hold a zoning permit, I think that, for me, that's confusing, cause the lady across the street has talked, told you she's gotta get a building permit. I think if we call things building permits, they'd know what you're talking about. Before you can build a deck, you gotta get a building permit to build it. That includes your zoning stuff too, but if you tell them you're getting a zoning permit, what the heck is that?
I know, and I, I do feel you on that, and usually our, our issue lie, like, if somebody goes to build a single-family home, it's gonna be a home builder, they know all the permits they need. Fences, decks, and sheds are our major three offenders, because. because they're done by the homeowner themselves, and they don't know what's required. One thing we have tried to do, and I, I did this early on in twenty twenty-one, my first hires, shed installation application, fence installation application, pole barn installation. That way, we are using plain language there, and within this, it has a checklist and a zoning permit and everything they would need for said shed. But I just feel like the word isn't getting out there.
I do agree that, you know, zoning permit was that. You know?
We could call it a shed, deck, and fence application, but then we don't cover. We've, I'm fine with that. I mean, I'm fine with taking the same permit, putting two different headers on it, and putting them both on the website. So I don't, that's not a bad feedback, because I agree, people are like, I know what that is, I'm not doing that.
No matter what you call it, somebody's always gonna have a problem.
Well, and yeah, and some people are just like, I'm not doing anything unless somebody comes and gives me, asks for forgiveness mindset. The only problem with that is, and maybe it's just because of the nature of the job here, I see, they, they, I see what does play out, and it usually plays out when something goes up for sale of like your sheds on my property. That's when the problem occurs.
Yep.
And we'll have real estate agents, and really, I've gotta figure out a way to charge these real estate agents. Um, we'll have real estate agents calling up here, uh, you know, saying, oh, I think the property looks like this, and we're like, that's not what we're seeing. You know, actually, you got a big problem here, your garage is divided in two. It'd be a real good idea to put those parcels together. There, of course, are like nothing in it for me, not doing it.
Speaking of that, the part of description and stuff, you used to be going B S and A with township and get that information. I tried to do that yesterday, because this one lady wanted to build something. The only thing I could get was her taxes. Couldn't get any sketches, picture of the property, but there are no sketches anymore.
Well, you can unfetch right there.
Yeah, you should be able to get the description.
And they're not legal, they're just, you know, GPS basically.
Yeah, I mean, these aren't, it's not a full legal description, even though that's what it says.
But it used to be you could go online on, on the township thing until just recently, and we have sketches and dimensions of your house footprint.
Yeah, that's.
We don't have that anymore.
No.
Are you talking about the B S and A online?
Yeah.
Me and Beth were wondering about that as well. There was a movement from the server internally recently in Bath, and we didn't know if that, uh, removed some of that from the B S and A online. However, ours, because it's hosted online by B S and A, that shouldn't have an effect.
You say movement of server, what do you mean?
There's, there's a new, yeah, we moved to, or everything internally to a new server.
Oh, so you ported it over to a different.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we were wondering if, because Beth was saying that earlier today, but that's a question for Beth. So maybe, maybe you send an email to Beth and see what she says. I'll talk to her about it if I can remember.
So.
It's odd. It should be on there, it should be on B S and A online.
You, you have your finger on the pulse of the, of the, uh, the faction here in the office a lot of times. You got any updates for us on the township website?
No, that's all under, yeah.
Taylor's handling that.
I know that was something that was mentioned, and ARPA expenses is doing overhaul of the website. So I don't know if that's something they're talking about in the budget session.
I just thought that was hyper, I mean, um.
Yeah, I know people get really frustrated with our website, because.
I've spent hours on that website.
For example, if you hover over this, and then you go here, you can get the dropdown, but if you click on government, it takes you to this, which don't give you any of the options you had, and if you hover over, so people are like, get stuck in the website, so I get it. It's one of those things though, you know, it's just another item on the list of a long item, long list.
Is there any development on our October tenth meeting?
Uh, no, uh, we talked to, to Maxium today. The gentleman's asking about, for everyone that doesn't know, you know, there's a larger development happening south, or, or, yeah, south of the township, just on, uh, this forty-acre parcel here, and there's a public hearing scheduled for the tenth. After speaking, I, I was a little bit reserved on sending out the notices in the mail to the three hundred, people within three hundred feet to confirm that this is a real thing, that this is something that could possibly happen. Now, if it will happen, so I'm, the jury's totally out. I mean, there's so many hurdles to work through for a project this big. But the feedback I got from multiple engineers today on development side and on the township side was, it's possible.
Oh, yeah.
So at, that at least made me feel like we're a go for a public hearing, because projects, as you gentlemen know, can die anywhere on the vine for a number of reasons, be it engineering, be it public feedback. And if this project is going to die, uh, it's better to know early on, when we haven't spent too much resources, and Nora has the developer. It's also good to be transparent with the public, and even though not every aspect of the site is perfectly worked out, at the end of the day, we wanna know from the public how they feel about this land use.
Yep.
And then we want them to know that we're being transparent, and we're coming to them early on, and we're saying, hey, we're not all the way there yet, but this is what's on the table, what do you think?
Right, and we may have more than one public hearing.
Sure.
One, one more question if I digress. You mentioned in that con- conversation there, uh, a larger project south. Is that in Bath Township?
The larger project I just said?
Yeah.
That's in Bath Township, yeah. The one on the Kessler parcel here.
Oh, 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 no, 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 I'm, I thought you were talking about that and then another large.
Nope, that's the one.
Okay.
Yeah, Project Forge.
Yeah, Project Forge. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Miles?
That's it, thank you.
You know that, that October tenth stuff is up on the web already, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we put it there, we were getting some phone calls, because we did notice it in the newspaper, and people were like, I wanna make sure it's on the website, so we, we made sure it was there.
So pretty much it's publicly known.
It's publicly known.
There is.
As you drive by, there's a sign, future home of.
Oh, it's future, and, and John, hey, please talk to Daryl Kessler about that, it says, future home of the food bank.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes, I saw that every day I drive by.
Yeah, you saw future use of, I think the same thing if I didn't look at it good.
It's been there for, uh, three years now.
I'll talk to Cammy tomorrow.
Yeah, please talk, I mean, I, at this point, I'm like, wanna go out with a sawzall and just terrorize it, you know?
Just paint out future.
Just ram into it there, G.
So have you had any feedback on it yet at all?
No, we haven't had any, um, communication either way, so.
I just didn't know if you had.
Other than, I mean, from people involved in the township, but not the general public.
Oh, okay. Are you talking about Project Forge?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I've had numerous discussions with the Kessler people. Mr. Hughan Blies, I'm sorry, you are up for a trustee report. Oh, public comment? Well, I kinda ignored the public, I'm sorry. She's been so quiet, I just kind of noticed she wasn't even there. Thank you.
We, uh, we met last week. Uh, we had a special board meeting, which seems to be, uh, par for the course right now. At five o'clock, we talked about the budget process, so we've started to engage in going through the budget. Uh, meeting by meeting, we will go through that prior to the regular meetings, uh, asking questions. You all have access to that, I'm happy to share that with you. Uh, if you can't find it on the web, if you have questions, happy to answer those. But this is the beginning of the couple-month process of, of determining our budget.
No, it's not.
We have not gotten to the capital improvement area of the budget yet in our discussions, but Karen did mention that the trail had some funding in it, uh, so that would, and I think, I do think she said that was the only project that she had budgeted for. But don't hold me to that if that's not correct, because we're not there in the budget yet, but you can see it in the budget if you wanna pull it up. Uh, at six o'clock, we met then for our regular meeting. We did some normal business. We appointed Helen Murphy, which many of you know, to the Senior Services Advisory, uh, Board. Uh, Jason Almarigi, who's a former Planning Commission member, former board member, resigned from the Clinton County Broadband Task Force. If you remember, on his way out from the board, we had appointed him to be our representative there. Some things at work have changed for him, and he doesn't have the time to do the meetings anymore. Uh, so we need to discuss at the board level who we want to sit in for there. And I think Marie has indicated she'd like to make a recommendation for that, so if any of you are interested, let Marie know. Uh, you know, it's sort of like a mixed bag, right? They sort of ignore Bath, so it feels like, why put someone on their committee? But then they have an excuse to ignore us if there's no one on the committee, so it would be nice to have someone sit there. Uh, Dwight Washington came to the meeting and mentioned that there is some new funding for broadband coming available. Hopefully, we'll be part of that, uh, but again, we'll see, so.
For the record, I put my name in the hat for that.
Good, thank you.
And I let the supervisor know.
Great. Did you email her or tell her?
I told her, just like that.
Okay.
No, I didn't. I don't use email with her.
I don't. Not trying to stir up trouble, I'm just asking factually. She may not have gotten it. Uh, the police department gave an annual report, sort of like what Miles was talking about, preparing for his department. I find these departmental annual reports fascinating. It really does show the growth of our township beyond just census numbers, beyond, you know, new houses going up, what's happening, and, and, you know, crime is up across the state and probably the country, but also in Bath Township. I mean, we've seen the number of emergencies that our, uh, police force and fire force have been out on, um, you know, guns and fires and suicide. I mean, this is really, really rough out there, uh, which means, you know, we're going to need more resources for the community, more resources for our staff. It's tough to deal with that on a day-by-day basis and remain a police officer, remain a fire fighter, and, you know, we desperately need those folks, so I think, you know, all of this stuff is sort of changing. It was started pre-pandemic, but I think the pandemic exacerbated it, and it's gonna look different for governance. It's gonna look different for funding, how we structure these things, uh, sort of the chickens are coming home to roost, and we're not gonna be able to do this on the cheap, on the fly, on the quick anymore. We probably should never have been doing it that way, but we're gonna have to really double down and invest in some of these areas. That, uh, report is in the board packet, if you wanna check it out and see what the force is dealing with. Like I said, it's just really fascinating. Uh, we heard four of the ARPA proposals, uh, presented to us. One was the keyless entry that we all heard, and there was a security camera aspect of that added. Uh, the police department's asking for new shields. As gun violence goes up, it seems like a good investment for our, for our folks. Uh, the police department have asked for hazard pay, which is one of the dedicated uses of ARPA funds to provide first responders hazard pay for the time during the pandemic when they were on the front lines. So they've put in a proposal for that, and then the last one we heard was the senior center, uh, expansion proposal. The building that they've put together looks really neat. I mean, it looks like it's doubling the size of the building. Uh, I think there's a lot of opportunity there. There's still some debate about the, if the numbers are panning out and in, in support of adding a half-million-dollar addition. There's debate, and people would be upset just for me saying it that way, but we're not fully utilizing the building yet, so that's a question. But they did a great presentation, and again, the, the schematics look very, very, um, neat, just like new stuff for our people to engage in. Uh, I'm happy to report to you all that the board finally accepted the C I P that we sent to them. It feels like a long time ago. Uh, it did not pass unanimously, but it passed, and that's all that matters. It is on file moving forward.
What, the C I P you sent?
Yes.
You mean that all of the ones that we graded, is that what you're saying?
No, the plan.
The plan.
Oh, oh, all of it.
The master plan.
Yes.
They accepted the master plan.
Thank you.
Put it on file.
Yes, filed it away. Uh, we, for a third time, denied repaying legal fees to the supervisor and replacing her office. I'm just reporting to you the facts of what happened. I don't know if that will continue to come before the board. It's been a no each time so far. Uh, we did talk about an appointment process. We spent a lot of time thinking through this for trustee Benzy, who hopefully you all have heard, uh, passed away. He's a former Planning Commission member, uh, board member, longtime resident and just a real heart of the community. Uh, I had an opportunity to go to his memorial this weekend, saw some of you there, uh, was very, very nice. Uh, unexpectedly taken from us, um, we have a time clock that has started on how soon we have to replace it. So it feels really yucky, frankly, to be like talking about this so soon on the heels of this, but there is a forty-five-day clock ticking. What the board, uh, again, not unanimously, but we got close, decided to do was to take applications uh, from interested parties until October fourth, close of business, so five o'clock. Uh, and then to hold a special meeting on October eleventh, where candidates would be given an opportunity to speak to the board, and a decision would be made that night. Uh, the application form is available on the township website, if you are interested, if you'd like to share it with, uh, anybody, uh, that would be helpful. I know we've gotten a couple in, I imagine we'll get some more in here. Uh, but that seemed like the fairest process to put sort of a call out widely and see who, who comes in and who's interested. Uh, real, separate and related to that, at the same time, uh, there was supposed to be a board meeting on October sixteenth, both a special and a regular board meeting, special for budget, regular for, you know, the business of the township. But because, uh, Karen's gonna be out of town, uh, I'm also gonna be out of town, the board decided to cancel October sixteenth and move that business into the October eleventh special meeting. So the October eleventh will be at one big special meeting, starting at five. We will cover the budget, not the entirety of the budget, but like an hour of the budget, uh, the replacement of trustee Benzy, that process, and then the regular business of the township, so it'll be a lengthy night.
And that meeting is when?
The eleventh.
The eleventh.
November.
October.
October.
Uh, so don't come on the sixteenth of October. No one will be here. But the next meeting is still on as normal, special meeting at five, regular meeting at six on October second. Uh, again, that special meeting will be working through the pages of the budget, so if you wanna hear that, you can watch it live, you can come in and, and view it. Uh, it's helpful if you wanna get a good understanding of how the budget works in the township. So that's the shifting things that have happened around schedule. Uh, and then a couple of items we just didn't get to, and because of our board rules, uh, it forces us to move that to a future meeting that was ironically talking about the board rules and, uh, the, the potential sale of some township, uh, property down by, uh, Park Lake. So those have not been discussed, uh, as we expected them to be at the last meeting, and they will be moving forward to the next meeting.
Will they be moved up in the agenda?
You've been here, you know it's hard to predict what's going to happen.
Are we gonna spend twenty-five minutes redoing the agenda again at the next?
I can firmly say I believe probably. Whoa, it does take a while to get an agreed-upon agenda. That's all the news that's fit to print. I won't be at the October second meeting, so I will, I will watch it when I return to town and report back to you at our, what, October tenth meeting?
Yeah.
So you'll know that. I'll be out. I will happily tell you what's going on off camera. Thank you. Any questions, any, anything I can clarify?
It was brought up during the, uh, senior system expansion thing that parking was gonna be an issue?
Yeah.
Because the, uh, number of parking spaces that will be required is far in excess of the availability of property they have right there on site. So there's gonna have to be a workaround of some kind if this goes forward.
Park them, park them up at the Dollar General and have a blue bus bring them down. That'll work.
Yeah, there's some real limitations to having, I mean, it's, we're not, we're not fit to be a large footprint here. So there's some limitations there, and, you know, I think there's pros and cons to the opportunity.
Yeah, there is. Thank you. Thank you. Trustees, your opportunity to make comments. Nope, everybody's tired and wants to go home.
Welcome, Cade, and of course, of course, Lexi still, so. Let's meet, appreciate your work in here.
Yep.
And I always appreciate your hard work, Miles.
Anybody else got any comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. It's been a great meeting. Appreciate it. Yes, we did get a lot done. Yes, we did get a lot done.
Who was, who did, Lexi, she was student as well?
Since we sent us a new one up.
Yeah, we usually have two intros.
Oh, gotcha.
If you come to the meetings.
Shots fired!
We did miss you. You weren't here, right?
No, I wasn't here. I was out in business.
Was that here?
What was that?
I said, was I here? I was, but.
Body, just not in mind.
Just like tonight.